Okay, I call this meeting to order. At this time, it will stand for the invocation and then we'll be doing the pledge and also the Texas pledge. Please stand. Mr. Garber.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Let's pray. Father, I lift this city up to you and I ask for your hand in our lives and in our city as we complete the final steps in this budgeting process. And Lord, thank you for protecting and guiding our families, our businesses, and our hearts. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation, under God, one and individual. Citizens' comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council and may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items brought before them at this time. Catherine?
We have no one online here.
There's none online?
It looks like Catherine may be getting a form.
Okay, Mayor, I think she's going to speak on two different agenda items. So I think you can go ahead and move forward. You're going to speak on the two agenda items, are you not?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't have anyone then for citizens' comments. So you can move on.
She wants it on the agenda items?
Yes.
Do we know which agenda items?
Yeah, it's the, uh, Adam four.
I'm sorry, Adam four and Adam five.
Okay. She wants to speak at the time when we're discussing those?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. Should the mayor or a council member desire discussion on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. I'd entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote.
It's not working. Stop. I can't refresh.
Oh, there it goes. There it goes.
Okay.
Do it again?
Do it again?
Cast your vote.
I vote yes.
Use your short names.
Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Public hearing. Conduct a public hearing, consider testimony and take appropriate action on a rezoning request to amend the zoning classification on approximately 20.859 acres of land within the H Garrison survey abstract number 507, City of Corinth, Denton County, Texas. The property is generally located at the southwest corner of Interstate 35E and Corinth Parkway. An approximate 19.9863 acres of the tract is currently zoned as MX-C, mixed-use commercial, and approximately .8727 acres of the tract does not currently have a zoning designation but is subject to the SF-1 zoning district regulation per the Unified Development Code. The proposed rezoning would result in the entire tract being designated as PD Plan Development District with a base zoning of MX-C, mixed-use commercial. Mr. Hart?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'd like to have Helenie Beadle, our planning director, to lay this item out for you.
This is the public hearing for the Parkway District. I have a lot of slides. I apologize. I'm wearing flats for a reason. But I'm going to go through it quickly but thoroughly so that you won't have to ask a lot of questions at the end. So this is the property that is currently owned by the EDC. It's the Parkway District. It's at the southwest corner of Corinth Parkway and I-35. The site is relatively flat with some tree masses, especially along Lynchburg Creek. The existing zoning is mostly MX. The Tech dot right-of-way that we acquired in the, let's see, is this working? Yes. So the little white piece on top of the red here, this is the Tech dot right-of-way that we occurred that we're treating as SF-1 zoning. So the entire property would be zoned for a planned development district with the MX being the remaining base zoning district. I want to go back a little bit in history. The Parkway District, it's a catalyst piece and we also call it a showcase for Corinth. It meets a lot of the goals and vision and ideals that were outlined in the strategic plan as well as the comprehensive plan. I've put quite a few of those on the slide above you and I'm not going to read it word for word for you. The other items I wanted to touch on is that it had a lot of strategies and actions in the strategic plan. The TERS district, the strategic plan, working with the landowners and how the events occurred is in June of 2019, the city purchased roughly 18 acres at the southwest corner. That portion of the property is owned by the EDC. The former police station was transferred over to the EDC. And then, as I mentioned, the Tech dot right-of-way that we purchased, that is also owned by the EDC. We have an existing Chapter 380 agreement with the developer. We are working on an amendment. However, the 380 can kind of take over where parts of the zoning is just something we can't put in zoning, whether it's state law or it's just something that's not enforceable. So for that, the 380 touches on some of the square footage requirements, hotel brands, park improvements, as well as exterior building materials. So in July of 2020, we adopted the comprehensive master plan, comprehensive plan. And as you will recall, we worked on that for over a year. And then this particular property specifically responds to several of the strategies in that plan. I've listed them up there about developing the character, you know, a place, a focal place for folks to come into Corinth and spend their money, whether they can live here or they're just traveling through. So it is a destination for entertainment. We're looking for four to six stories for higher intensity of residential and commercial development. It is right on I-35 at a major intersection, so this is an appropriate proposed use in this location. Allow mixed use by right. The zoning district is mixed use. Parking to be accommodated in parking structures. They are proposing a parking deck. And density is based on a street grid that is dense and walkable. They're extending a couple of streets through the development. They have more of an urban-style multifamily you'll see later on, and it's quite walkable. Has a lot of pedestrian promenades that have been enhanced with tree wells, so there'll be a lot of shade, pedestrian access through the middle of the property as well as all along the periphery. Connection to adjoining usage such as the city hall, the college, and the regional trail network. And the density shouldn't be driven by a max, but it should be dictated by the market and design standards. I already mentioned the streetscape improvements and also by providing small-scale greens and plazas that can activate the area as well as the particular site. This is a page right out of our comprehensive plan that explains the mixed-use TOD as well as some of the imagery. In addition to the comprehensive plan, there's the future land use that identifies what we call the place types, which is the mixed-use TOD. The thoroughfare plan identifies the surrounding arterials. The site is supported by existing infrastructure that can support the density as well as the commercial trips that are being generated. And also the active transportation plan with our trail network. So this is the proposed plan that the applicants have submitted. We've worked on this a lot of time. There's been a lot of back and forth to bring you the best plan possible. We've vetted it through the Development Review Committee, which includes public works, engineering, planning, fire, police. We all get in the room together and go over everything that we might need a bite of or to make sure that they comply with. So the concept plan has five different block areas. At the north, we have a restaurant and commercial area for sit-down restaurants. Drive-throughs are prohibited. Another block has an 80-room guest room hotel, and there's a coffee shop-type drive-through that is permitted in that particular block. Higher-density urban lofts, townhomes towards the south end. And then the last block is a park and open space trail system. This is the block plan I was describing to you with the land uses and acreages identified. Block A, the one I mentioned with the restaurant, retail, commercial component. Block B is the hotel. Block C is the urban loft living as well as Block D's townhomes and Block E is the I mentioned earlier a couple of streets that will connect through the property over to I-35. We'll go look at that. Let me go backwards. This is Street A, which is a continuation of Silver Meadow, and then Street B, which is aligning with an existing median opening on Corinth Parkway. The transportation and parking for the development responds to our thoroughfare plan as well as the needs for onsite. They've provided for angled and head-in parking in strategic areas to be able to create the street frontage with landscaping as well as the pedestrian promenade that I talked about earlier. Up above, you see the parking that is outlined for the development. Municipalities, we don't know everything, so we have to rely on the experts in the industry documents and plans and approvals that we are given to use as go-bys for development. So on this particular property, because it is a large master plan community with shared parking throughout the different uses and blocks, we have the parking ratios in the tabulation chart that you see above you. One of the manuals that we use is the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation, and they have three different categories, and we kind of hit it like right in the middle with this proposal. The PD is within the half-mile of the future rail stop, and the overall allowance for the shared parking through all the blocks allows us to support the proposed parking in the multifamily at 1.45 spaces per unit. I talked a little bit earlier about parks, trees, and open space standards. The image above shows how we connect the immediate southwest corner of I-35 and Corinth Parkway, and that open space and pedestrian connection goes towards the west, and then the north-south green line you see is that pedestrian promenade that will be heavily landscaped, how it goes entirely through the property and connects to the south. We already have existing sidewalks along Corinth Parkway. They're proposing to build a trail to our standards along the Lynchburg Creek in that bottom block called OS-4. There's also sidewalk along I-35. So saying that earlier, how they're meeting the multimodal transportation needs, they have done that. The site already has the roadway infrastructure, but they're also adding a lot of pedestrian connections through and around their development. So in Block A, we have our buffer details up there on the chart, which are going to be a 15-foot-wide minimum. Along Block C, which is the multifamily area, there's a 20-foot-wide buffer area. Block A, which is the properties up at the north end of the property, is a 10-foot-wide buffer area along I-35. We have 15 and 10, and trying to maintain, we have some narrow areas where we have right-turn lanes where it goes down a little bit, but we're trying to maintain 10 to 15 feet. The parking lot screening all along the roadways will be a minimum of 30 inches high to protect against the vehicle headlights and any glares you might have from that. Continuing on with the parks, trees, and open space standards, they have, streets will have one tree per 50 feet of spacing area, the parking lots. You'll have a space every 10 parking spaces. You'll have a tree every 10 parking spaces. The open spaces up above are also prescribed. The open space three is right along Corinth Parkway. This is where we have one of the heavier stands of existing trees that they plan to preserve and maintain to use as a buffer towards the residents to the west and northwest. Additionally, the structures that are angled in the multifamily, the urban style, there's a minimal amount of the structure and the height of the structure along Corinth Parkway to help buffer the residents to the west. We have a lot of landscaping standards in the ordinance before you this evening. Some of those are detailed up in the chart. The pedestrian plan that I talked about earlier and with the key, the legend that tells you what width is going where, that's also in the ordinance before you this evening. And then the architectural standards, this is something that they've worked with us to ensure the views from any of the public areas, the public roadways, will have the highest quality of building materials. And then quality materials will be utilized within the interior. So all of the structures you can see that are identified with this heavy black line, those are the ones that would fall within the facade A, building materials, and then facade B would be on the interior, say in this area. Once again, more to the architectural standards. We've worked on treatments to provide for a higher quality, a little bit more of the bells and whistles, you know, stoops for the multifamily as well as the townhome. The ground floor retail will have bulkheads, which is a masonry standard about, let's see, 18 inches above the finished floor, so you don't have that look of the strip retail where it's all solid glass from floor to ceiling. It provides for a higher-quality feel of the development. We've worked with them on signage, and along I-35, they have the opportunity to have two monument signs. Those are the yellow diamonds that meet our multi-tenant monument signs along I-35 standards. They have the ability to have attached signs, as you see where you have a red triangle, and then monument signs along Corinth Parkway. When we were going through the comprehensive plan, there was discussion about some type of entry monument into our city, so they've provided for that allowance, and that would be a city cost to erect something like that, but the zoning provides for it should we choose to do that later. At this point, I want to turn over the presentation to George Marshall, our engineer, to touch on some of the non-related, non-zoning-related items that always come up as questions.
So, excuse me, sorry about that. Most of you know that Lynchburg Creek has some flooding problems, right? And it was recently remapped and determined in 2000, actually, 20, I'm sorry, June 2020, the new maps became effective, and we had 65 homes upstream of this area that were added to the floodplain. One thing that I have been ensuring through this whole process, and the developer can astute to that, is that we will not have any rise or additional floodplain problems with this development, making sure that the hydraulic capacity of the culverts under I-35 and whatever they're proposing within the current floodplain will meet our standards as well as FEMA standards. So that's a big deal. The other piece I just want to note, and I think I mentioned it earlier today, was, you know, we applied for grant funding to help out those properties. That grant project has moved it through, I believe, the last step through FEMA, which was the environmental clearance. We got that clearance this week. And so from there, hopefully, we can start hiring an engineer to design, do the detailed design, purchase some right-of-way or easements for it, for the project. But that project will actually help out 100 homes within the floodplain, 95 upstream of here and five downstream from this location. So that's always good news there. So obviously, with the development in the floodplain, they will be, you know, required to prove that there's no adverse impact. So whenever you add additional concrete, there's always more runoff with that than, because the ground usually will absorb some water. Though the clay soils that we have up in North Texas don't actually absorb a lot of water, so there is some, there is a significant amount of runoff today anyway. They have already submitted a drainage assessment. We're already in the review process. They are going to have to file a conditional letter of map revision. We've gotten this, we've received the second review. We've already made review comments once. They resubmitted it to us last Friday, and that will go through the process to be able to reclaim the property out of the floodplain. And that goes through our process. You know, we want to make sure Lynchburg Creek is cohesive in the drainage. There's a lot of things going on with it, with the grant project and other developments in the area, that kind of stuff. And so Jones Carter is reviewing, they're the engineering firm that is helping us with Lynchburg Creek, all things Lynchburg Creek, and they have, they're doing the detailed engineering review. I don't have all of those expertise. That's why we hire the experts that can help make sure that we are not going to cause any problems upstream or downstream. The last thing I'd like to note is zoning is one piece. There are a lot of other pieces in our codes that they have to follow. The transportation plan, our drainage design manual, our standard construction details, the Texas manual on uniform traffic control devices, standard specifications, ASHTO, the highway design manual, health code, our engineering standards manual, the water code, our master drainage plans, our floodplain ordinance, erosion control ordinance, and all those other fun things. So zoning is one piece of it, and these are other things that I look at down the road. Once zoning is approved, they'll submit to me detailed engineering plans to prove that they're not going to, that they're meeting all these codes as well as not causing an adverse impact.
So back to the comprehensive plan. When we were looking at the plan, we had our consultant through Design Surets with business leaders as well as landowners and residents come up with traditional development scenarios as well as optimized development scenarios. So you can see the traditional concept and then the optimized, which this is very similar to the optimized, which meets the vision and the plan, plan goals. Now to move on to our notification, we sent the letters that were required to send to property owners within 200 feet. We did not receive any letters back in support or in opposition. The public notices were published in the Denton Record Chronicle according to local government code as well as our UDC. The developers hosted a neighborhood meeting here at City Hall back in July?
July.
Early July. We had about 13 residents attend that meeting. There was a lot of good dialogue and exchange and questions for the presentation. The planning and zoning reviewed this at their 26th of July meeting and unanimously recommended you all approve the rezoning for the Parkway District. The staff recommendation is the application as presented to you this evening. You have an updated ordinance before you. We had to fine-tune some fire safety notes in the ordinance to make sure we were all covered and protected. So that's the, that's the change that you would see. The proposed uses and development standards are suitable in this location, and the existing transportation infrastructure is satisfactory. Further, the development will be required to comply with the city's development regulations, and staff recommends approval is presented. The applicant is here if you have any questions, and we can certainly take questions whenever you have them. Thank you.
Are there any questions from council?
Can you go back to the parking slide? I thought I could. Yes. Is this the norm parking that's normal for restaurants and hotels? Because it seemed, even the apartments, 474 parking for 327 apartments? That doesn't seem, normally it's going to be two cars per apartment. So what do we do about that?
I will let them answer more of the marketing standards, but it has a lot to do with the mix of units, and you can see they're heavier on the one-bedroom at 60%. So that's generally what drives the smaller urban loft-style apartments. The spaces for the hotel as well as restaurants, that's very customary.
And then I received an email from a citizen that asked me, just saying that she was opposed to this. She's worried about the height. She says that the height request of 75 feet and 85 feet are much higher, taller than anything the city has ever approved, that we're setting the precedence there, and that these will, they're much higher than the neighborhood homes. I don't know if this is accurate information, if it's higher than anything we've ever approved or not, but I did tell her that I would, you know, state her opposition to it.
How tall, how many stories are, this goes, this can go up to six, six stories. What are you proposing in this Block C and as well as Block D? Because the hotel can go up six stories as well. Because the hotel can go up six stories as well.
Well, they have a presentation. Do you want to hear their presentation?
Yeah, great.
Shay, could you help pull up that for us, please?
Please state your name and your address, please.
I thought that might happen. Can you hear me? My name is Tim Coltart with Realty Capital, nine oh nine Lake Carolyn Parkway in Irving. I'll certainly try to answer both of your questions as I run through the presentation. But thank you very much for having us here and I'd also like to thank Bob and Helen Eve, Elise, who I know is new, but she's been really helpful. And George made me kind of nervous when he listed all those regulations that we're going to have to make sure we comply with. And I think it brings up a great point. I'll try to run through this quite quickly. When you're talking to a developer, there's no barriers to entry to being a developer. Anyone can say that's what they do. I think fortunately in this case, what we're going to try to show you is a resume or a history of projects that will give you some comfort that you've hopefully chosen the right one. So as I run through this here, we have, Realty Capital's been around for about thirty-plus years. There's three owners of Realty Capital. It's myself, Richard Myers, and James Archie. We've all been doing this for decades, which makes me feel old. I had here when I started. But I'm going to show you a few projects here. Lakeside in Flower Mound is about a hundred and fifty acre development that we started in two thousand and ten. We have built, I think we were entitled for about two thousand units there on a hundred and fifty acres, including six towers. We've built one of them and getting set to start on a second. Really nice looking project, has four of the top ten restaurants in Flower Mound located in Lakeside. In Mansfield, we have two projects under construction right now, Main Street Lofts. We started that probably six years ago and the city of Mansfield has actually recommended phase one as for game changer award. It's a big impact on the Terres district, similar to here. This was the first project to proceed in the Terres district and I think it's been very well received. And last year they approved us on a second project, which is already under construction on seventy-plus acres. Harvest, if you head pretty much directly west from here, you run into Harvest. It's on I thirty-five, I thirty-five W. And is a joint venture between us and Hillwood. And we have about four thousand homes approved there. We've built just over two thousand right now. It's a wonderful community, worked with a lot of both adjacent towns. We've got freshwater supply districts. I mean, it was, we had to build a seven-mile sewer line to get sewed there, but it's been very well received and I think is the fastest, the last three years running should be the fastest selling community in DFW. And Keller, another city that has high barriers to entry, which are things we look for. We like that. A city like Corinth, which has high standards, actually protects our investment in quality going forward. And it's really important that when you are building projects like this, that there is mechanisms in there that protect the integrity of what you're building. I think that goes to, a little to the precedent on height and I'll cover that a little further on. So the first thing I would ask if I was in your position is, do they build what they say they're going to build? And what you see on the left are examples from Lakeside and Colliville, Village of Colliville. And you'll see the rendering on the left and the buildings, what's actually built on the right. And you'll see they're really quite similar. You'll see the same thing here. Again, the Village in Colliville on the left was one of the original renderings. We have the clock tower on the right. And then the Vineyard Hometown, you know, one of the first mixed-use projects. It would be fifteen-plus years old now, I believe, and has been wildly successful. In fact, one of the coffee shops, Roots Coffee, that we had here was started by one of our residents and actually put Starbucks next door out of business. So this site, we've been working for a couple of years with staff. I think an iterative process is always the way that this works. And if I, I think we've, I think we've done eighteen different versions of the PD. I bet it's well over two dozen iterations on the site plan and they always look simple at the end, but this is a very dense site. It's a small site, it's only about twenty acres. We use the comprehensive plan as our basis of what we should be looking to build here. Obviously, the best thing about the site is the access. It has phenomenal access and, you know, that to me, especially when you're on thirty-five E is the biggest, is the biggest benefit. So much of thirty-five E is, plagued is probably the wrong word, but there's a lot of legacy development, you know, pool storage places, boat storage places. This is one part of that corridor that is really clean and we love that. That really helps us try to raise the bar on standards. I'm not going to go through all of these, I assure you, but we've been working on this for two years, basically. We put together a three-eighty agreement. I think Helen Eve did a great job of summarizing where we're at. But we have been sort of working through that process. We've done two clomer submittals, working with George. In fact, I think our engineers found some errors in Jones and Carter, so they've been working together. We've revised that. It's complicated trying to go through the federal government, but it's something we've done a number of times. And so we're excited and there's some examples of, you know, some of the different plans below. So again, the biggest question I think that most people have is timing. Everybody's excited to see this go forward. Since we've been working on this, we've gone through one pandemic. I'm hoping we don't go through a second. But, you know, really, all of this is going to come down to the one box that's in red. We've submitted to, George and Jones and Carter is reviewing right now, clomer. And the federal, the city is the floodplain administrator. They're required to, you know, make sure that we're not harming other folks. Most of the site is in the floodplain marginally. And so we are actually working on that right now. I think the ball's currently in the city's court, but the submittal of that clomer to FEMA is really important. We anticipate going through at least one review. And that's really the, the green light that says you have a site that you can reclaim and build on. And in the world of financing and, you know, there's a lot of money being invested here. I think we're over fifty million dollars. That's really important, making sure that we can actually do what we're telling our partners we're going to do. And that's something we know well. We've gone through the process before. I don't see any big issues with this one. It just will take some time. So you can see here, we're going from August right now, anticipating, as soon as the clomer's approved, and this is consistent with our three-eighty agreement, that is the trigger to purchase the property. So we've pursued that diligently. There's been a couple of hiccups along the way, but nothing that's in our control or the city's control, but we've had to duck and dive and work within those. So I think Helen Eve covered most of this. Really what we're looking for is a way to set the standard for the Agora District. We've got a twenty-acre site, has phenomenal access. We have five different blocks. We also have five different access points. That is really key for a project like this, giving lots of options for traffic. Means you're not concentrating all your traffic in one place. And being on, directly on the highway and having the visibility to the highway makes a big difference too. I mean, that's your marketing window. We're close to the sports fields, we're close to the university. You know, this is intended to be a destination, not just for folks from Corinth, but also for folks that are traveling on thirty-five. I think everyone's pretty clear on what's included in the project. The one thing that we did that was complicated when you're building on a highway is how do you create an urban environment when you've got, what, fourteen, is it ten lanes or fourteen lanes? I mean, there's a lot of lanes of traffic. It's the anti-urban. And so what we did is we almost, we pretty much turned everything inside out. And so Dan and I worked on this linear parkway that kind of connects the north part of the project to the south and that's highlighted in yellow on this, on this plan. We did, as far as rents are concerned, I've got some statistics on Corinth. We don't need to go through them, but we are looking to push rents from, from a residential standpoint and from a commercial standpoint and provide some of this really not here. I mean, the comps are not great because there's nothing quite like what we're looking to build. And that's consistent with what happened in Flower Mound also. Every broker we met with said restaurants will never work here. There's no daytime population and we now have four of the top ten restaurants located in Lakeside. So they're not always right. We did get questions about dark sky compliant. We're big believers in that. Lighting is key and making sure we're a good neighbor too. I'm going to show you a video here. I think it should, I may need to push it to play it. We just got this this morning. I hear the music, but I don't see anything there. And this is really just a, this is a marketing document that we use with our restaurants and financial partners and the likes, really to point out what I think is strong is the demographics today. We get really strong demographics, not a lot of competition. And what that allows us to do is build above market, which hopefully when it comes to the Agora District, you're not in the same place that we are right now, where we're trying to pump out to what's going on around here. You see here the buildings pop up. There's one arrow on it. You see here the hotel up front, the restaurants. One thing that's great about Lakeside is you have an architectural difference between the heights of buildings. So I know it's a concern, having these tall buildings. I think we're allowed to go to seven, five feet. We're anticipating right now, we're probably about sixty-six and sixty-seven feet. That is absolutely consistent with what's shown in the Agora District, proper answer plan. There's examples of five-story buildings, a multifamily dancer. Your question, it would be five stories tall, including the parking underneath, so parking and then four stories above. And there are pictures of the exact same product type and height. It's very consistent with the comp plan. Really what we're looking to build here is, oops, there we go. We're trying to build something that signals that this is a new place, it's a destination. And while I appreciate the concerns on height and they are, they're very valid concerns, we're essentially trying to put a flag on thirty-five that says, come here and we've got something interesting for you. The different heights of the buildings, so the restaurants will be one and a half stories tall. Then you go back, you'll have, most of the multifamily will be four stories. The one building on the back will be five stories. That's in part to try to accommodate parking, to make sure that we can park the project. But really, the parking driver goes back to the restaurants. And every restaurant group that we've spoken to, in fact, we're looking to start our own restaurant group right now. The most important thing is when you're in a suburban location is how easy is it to show up and find a park? And Texans don't like to walk far. Lots of people, lots of, lots of women particularly, but people don't like parking garages when they're just going to a restaurant. You need to have that, you'll see on, on one of our streets right in front of the restaurants on Street A, you know, we have, we call it teaser parking. And really, it's trying to, it's trying to make sure that folks know that they can come here, they have a choice of restaurants and they have, it's easy in, easy out. So when you're down at the ball fields, you can say, hey, let's meet down at, at the Parkway District and we'll meet for lunch. We don't know which restaurant we're going to go to yet, we'll see what the crowds are like. And so the inspiration for the restaurant area of this project, this is where Bob's and Madea and Wine Wood is in Grapevine. And, you know, there's a, there's a statue in the middle. And it's really nothing too outrageously crazy. It's just, the difference is, is that the restaurants don't look out to a parking lot. And every restaurant that you all have the opportunity to go to around here right now, you're on a parking lot, you're in a strip center. And so we're trying to raise that bar and create somewhere that actually has a feel that you want to go down, walk down the parkway to go down to the park. From I thirty-five, the difference in height of buildings will be interesting. But the way we've parked the restaurants right now, while we're showing a one to one hundred for restaurants, I think we've got it down, we've actually parked to a one to seventy-five or one to eighty. And that's because the parking is the key. You have to make it easy for people to get in there. I'll click through here. These are just some example pictures. The top left is actually Lakeside, the top right is also Lakeside. We hold a Friday night concert event here during the summer, incredibly well-attended. And, you know, we look forward to working with the city on something like that, that really just makes this a place where people want to go and hang out. When you're in a restaurant and you've got family with you, you're okay letting the kids go and walk down to the park. And that's one of the things I really like about the Grapevine example I showed. As far as the residential, you know, this is, we're talking high-end residential. There's lots and lots of standards that Helen Eve went through that require it to be high-end, but that's really what we build. We don't do, we're constantly building the highest rent in the market that we go into. We're not very good at saving. I guess we're, we're good at spending money, not saving it, I'm not sure. But to us, that's, that's the best way to go and it's, and that's why we look for cities that have barriers to entry, that just don't greenlight every project that goes forward. Here's kind of an example of the restaurant layout, just with the common space between them, quite similar to what I showed the pictures of before. The concept is, is be more local. This is actually a blob of our rendering where you've got, you know, a green space between the restaurants that again, gives the comfort that you can go have a drink outside while you're waiting on a restaurant or you can make a choice on which restaurant you want to go to. The end of the day, we're going to have a mix of restaurants here. You can't be all steak, you find steak dining. You need to have a mix that accommodates different options that people are looking for. So that's, I think we've been pretty successful in Lakeside at doing that. These are all Lakeside restaurants. We've got breakfast places, pizza places, Italian, and then eighteen, eighteen forty-five. The ones, number one is the tavern. It's actually, it's a, it's a small tavern and it's packed all the time. In fact, it's the number one restaurant in Flower Mound. And it's, it's quite small. I believe, I had them written down. I think it was like twenty-nine hundred square feet. Is that right? The tavern is twenty-seven hundred and fifty-nine square feet. You know, Epic Gelato is sixteen hundred square feet. Eighteen fifty-five, eighteen forty-five is sixty-two hundred square feet. Mina's thirty-five hundred square feet. And they're a great mix. It's difficult trying to find a complementary mix of restaurants. And that's part of the reason why we're actually looking to set up a restaurant group, because we spend so much time trying to chase these folks down. And as you can see here, they're all doing pretty well. You'll see here just a little more outside of Lakeside. These are all the different restaurants, concepts, I think it's most of them anyway, that we've worked on, on different locations, all over the metroplex. This was a D Magazine article that came out a couple of years ago and they had projects that got it right and ones that failed miserably. We had none on the failed miserably list. We had two on the, on the projects that got it right. We had two on the, on the projects that got it right. That's the presentation. To answer the questions that specifically came up, your parking was one, and we've, we've looked to, on the multifamily side, so we're going to be heavily studios and one bedrooms. You know, there's a lot of folks that are single, that are looking for a great place to live, and especially something like this, where there are options for them to do things. We have built a number of projects, Mansfield, Burleson, Flower Mound, all of them that are in a mixed-use environment. We use a 1.45 to 1.5 parking ratio. In this case, what we have, the biggest challenge that we've had is how do we make sure we park the restaurants to where they will work? And that's, and then how do we park the multifamily without building a full parking garage that we're going to be talking to the city about helping us to actually construct? And so the, every time we're going to financing, the first thing the lender's going to look for is, can you actually lease out this project? And so really, the, most cities we talk to, the biggest concern they have is, can you build it? And, and will it park right? We would be doing ourselves a massive disservice to have a project that didn't park. Everything's online now, social media is a beast, you all have all experienced it, and if we had reviews that said you can't find parking, our lease rate will go down, as will our occupancy. And frankly, if, if we don't fill this thing up, we're not making any money, and the bank's not happy. So the bank's always looking for, to make sure that you can park it appropriately, and we feel this is parked perfectly. There is a benefit of shared parking in this, in this case, too, because the restaurants aren't always going to be packed and busy. There's a lot of on-street parking, there's lots of options for parking. We'll have some tuck-under garages and the likes, and so we feel we're very adequately parked. And frankly, parking is what can kill a project, too. You have too much parking, and it's all concrete. So it's finding a balance. I guess my point would be that, in this case, we think we've found the right balance. History of our other projects would show we've found the balance, and we're more than happy to, I think we've shared some of those in the past. But it's, in our opinion, in our experience, and I'm the one who signs on the guarantee for the loan, I assure you, we've not had parking issues. Now, it's a fine line, and there's lots of projects that have a very different unit mix to this, too, where they might have a lot of two bedrooms and three bedrooms, that's where you're going to end up with a lot of extra cars. The other question was regarding height, and I, I think it's a valid concern to address, how tall should these buildings be? The other part is, is what kind of standard are we trying to set? Are we try, this is intended to be a gateway project. This is a project that should have mass. It's, when, when this is here and the Agora District is there, it should be obvious when you're driving down 35, where is the center? And that's, and the way to achieve that is to have an interesting facade, and with the stacked different building heights that we have, if you drive down past Lakeside, it's on, it's on the front of this presentation, our building's on the front, a two-story, we go back to four-story, you go further back and we go up to 15-story.
Well, that's on the lake.
It's on the lake.
I mean, that makes a difference. How tall do you anticipate the hotel?
I, I think it can be up to six stories. I'd anticipate it's probably four or five.
Yeah, I just, I mean, that sits right next, you know, the property that sits right behind it off Corinth Parkway are single-story homes that were built in the probably 70s and 80s, and a two-story townhouses. I think with, I think it's going to just dwarf everything. A five and, a five or six-story building is going to dwarf everything around it. And if you have, if you're looking for staggered and you have a hotel in the front, and then you have lesser stories behind it, and then back up again, which I think the variation in heights is aesthetically pleasing, but what does that do to the surrounding area? You know, does it dwarf everything? Yeah, we want it to be noticed, but we also don't want a monst, you know, a monstrosity, you know, right off the highway.
I, I think it's a valid debate. The way I would look at it, when you're coming from the south, you're coming from up high, you're actually dropping down before you get to Corinth Parkway, and I think it's the same actually from the north, where you come up over the hill, you've got the, the credit union on the corner. We sit down quite a lot lower than they are. I think it's the right mix, and it's really what we need to be able to get the density that we need to be able to get the project to move forward. And it's, we have moved, in early iterations, we had the back building on Corinth Parkway budding directly up to Corinth Parkway, you know, in typical urban fashion, and we actually pulled it back and squared it off. So really, it's on that one point on Street A that it's, you know, I, I can see the concern. We have extremely high standards. I think we're 90% masonry on all of our exterior facades. We'll have lots of balconies and, and awnings and the likes, and I actually, really, that's one of my favorite parts of the project, where you've got the tree save area across, but where that building comes to a point tells you exactly where the main entrance is. And, you know, I, I totally appreciate the concern, how much does it dwarf stuff around it? I think it's a compromise. I'm, I'm not sure I can give you the, the perfect answer, but we need to have the four stories on top of the parking in order to be able to park it also.
But you're just doing the, the total of five stories on that back.
Right.
The, the other three sides of it are four stories?
That whole building. Let me get this way. Oh, please don't play. Okay. So if you see where the blue callout is on the multifamily, that one building is, that has an entire podium of, of concrete, so it's got two lanes of parking underneath the building.
So the U-shaped at the back, that, that backs as much up to Corinth Parkway. And as far as the townhouses there, do you think that being close to the access road would be an issue? Can you not shift them to the west at all? Or is that part of the drainage?
It's part of the floodplain.
Got it.
Yeah, this is a, when, when George said that it's complicated, I mean, running these models, what they do is they take cross-sections all the way across, they put everything into the computer, and it, and it, and it, some of them take days to run. It is a, it is a science. And so we have basically tried to take as much as we can, but also ensure that we're not going to raise the floodplain on anybody else's property. And that's the, so that's one of the thresholds that is really driving the project.
Yeah, I understand that.
If we could have more parking over there, or in some form or fashion, that may actually allow us to reduce the, the structured parking. But, you know, what we've, the goal of this is to create a place where the restaurants thrive. In order to do that, you talk to any restaurateur and you say, hey, what about if you had a parking garage right next to you? Could you put all your parking in there? They'll say, that'll kill us. Go down to Victory, you know, trying to go, we, Mia Nonno in, in Lakeside, we invested with them in a restaurant down in Victory, and it is plagued by parking challenges and, and getting traffic through the site. And it's, it's a challenge.
Do the townhomes have garages?
Townhomes have garages on the back.
Two-car garages?
Two-car garages. They've, we've got requirements for carriage-style doors for them. We have requirements for screening between that alley and the, and the park, as, as well as on the front of the townhomes. There's four different standards, highly encouraged stoops, front balconies, and those sorts of things. To answer your question, I'm not sure I answered it about being close to the frontage road. Is that a concern? Yes, but I think when, you can be a mile away from the highway, you, you're still going to hear some of it. I think that you overcome that by giving enough reasons to be here, and that's walkability. That's having a place where you can ride your bike and go to a restaurant.
Well, you, I came, I came to the presentation that y'all did for the city, and I voiced my concerns at that time as well. And so it, it still is a concern of mine, particularly if you're going to do it on the backside of the apartment complexes, then why are we doing a hotel that tall as well?
So one thing with the hotel, I think that through our 380 agreement, there's a list of hotel flags that are permitted. More than likely, when we come forward with a hotel, we're going to be saying, this is the hotel that we're looking to bring, this is why we think that it's a good addition to the project. It's a pretty high bar of the list of hotels that are provided by Wright. So I think at that stage, you get another opportunity to say, hey, I think this thing's too tall, or it won't look right, or how are you going to overcome and give some interesting architectural element that makes it fit? You know, we obviously, the hotel has been driven pretty strongly by the city also. I, I think there's a great need for it. I think it's the right location for it. Hotels usually want to be up on the corner. We've, we've pulled this one down to be on, on the frontage, so we could free the corner up for the restaurants, so they are prime time. But I, I think that, I think it's, I think we're most likely going to be back in front of you, requesting your permission to build that hotel due to the 380 agreement. I think if it's any of the other ones on the list, I think you'll probably say, I don't care if it's seven stories high, I'm really excited to have this hotel, but obviously we can't build seven. The six is very consistent with what's in all of the Agora District, and there's pictures of it throughout the comprehensive plan, and so I think it's consistent with where it's been placed.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay.
I do have one, I do have one more. When you were going through the timeline, it's a 90-day FEMA review, that's the max review, do they ever do those quicker?
No.
No. I mean, yeah, it's, it's, it is the federal government, and we're hoping we can get, I don't think it's an overly complicated climber, it's been well reviewed. And we want, we, we don't benefit until we close on the property either. Right now, this is all out-of-pocket money we're chasing, everything was, so we want to close as quickly as we can, but we have to have the stamp of approval from the federal government, because no one believes you'll get it.
You can always dream, right?
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yep. No questions? Okay. All right, at this time, I will open up for public hearing, and I believe we have, is it Denise Wetzel? You would like to speak to this? Please state your name and your address for the records.
Yes, I'm Denise Wetzel. I'm at 1006 Meadows Drive in Corinth, just right, not too far from here. I came to the meet and greet, I was a skeptic of this project when it, you know, first came up, and so I've been coming and listening and taking everything in, and I came to the meet and greet and spoke with the gentlemen, and I am familiar with a couple of their projects, you know, Lakeside and then also Harvest. And those are classy, you know, I think they're nice. So I just wanted to say I would, I'm ending up being for the project, and I'm glad that the city was able to get a reputable company. I hope it'll end up being a great asset for the city, and that'll look good. Remember, put some color in it. I'm counting, obviously, on planning and development and the council to keep on top of the project, to make sure it's following the requirements and keep the best interest of the Corinth citizens in mind. And as a sidebar, I'm kind of hopeful that if the city likes this, it turns out well, that the same company, the same company, if we still like them, no, I'm just teasing, maybe they could hopefully develop the remaining property that's on the other side of the creek and to south to Lake Sharon. So maybe that, you know, once that area is developed too, then, like you were saying on the height, maybe we could kind of, you know, would blend in a little better. So I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Shay, is there anybody online?
No, sir, we have no one online.
Okay. And at this time, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak to this? Okay. Closed public hearing. This time, I'd entertain a motion for this item.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve as presented.
I'll second.
Hold on a second. I'm sorry. I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 21-8-19-22 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I just wanted to thank you and your team for an excellent presentation. We have sat through many, many, many presentations, and I think you hit a lot of the nails on the head that needed to be hit, number one. Number two, I'm excited. This is kind of the culmination of probably five years of work, three years intense work to be able to attract a developer like Realty Capital into the city of Corinth. Not only do I think that ultimately it's going to be awesome for Realty Capital, but it's really going to help the city of Corinth set the tone for the rest of this development. We have something special here, and I could not be more proud to have Realty Capital be a part of this. And if I'm not mistaken, Realty Capital, our involvement with, with them was one of the reasons we had so many good discussions with Denton County. It really led a lot of credence to a lot of things that we want to do here in Corinth, and I, I hope that this is the beginning of a lot of very good things. It will be the beginning of a lot of very good things in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Congratulations. We look forward to working with you, and again, thanks Helen Eves and her staff for all their efforts in putting this together. It ceases to amaze me every time when we have one of these presentations, how thorough it is and how it really educates us on, on the diocese here, on what you're trying to accomplish. So thank you very much and look forward to it. And thank you, too, George.
Thank you, George.
Okay. Item number five, consider an act on a resolution of the City Council of the City of Corinth, Texas, adopting a proposed fiscal year 22 municipal tax rate that will not exceed the voter approval tax rate, calling a public hearing to be held on September 16, 2021 at Corinth City Hall at 7:00 PM, requiring publication of a notice of public hearing on a tax increase in accordance with state law, providing for the incorporation of premises and providing an effective date. Mr. Hart?
Yes, Mayor and Council, under the truth in taxation law, you're required to call a public hearing, and at the time of calling the public hearing, you have to set a tax rate about, which you can't go above. You can go below the number that you publish. And in, during the workshop, you had discussed publishing a not-to-exceed rate at our current tax rate, 57.817 cents. Now, if you want to go with that, then you can go forward, or if you want to have any other number, you, you can do that as well, as so long as it's below the, the voter approval rate of about 58.85.
Okay. All right. At this time, we do have a public, you don't want to speak? I just...
I just. Want us to tell people about the possible tax rate?
Please state your name and your address for the records.
Denise Wetzel, 1006 Meadows Drive.
And you have three minutes.
Everybody's going to get, no, my address. They're going to buzz my house. No, just teasing. Okay, I tried, I read through the packet and I was trying to understand all this. But basically, I'm against raising the tax rate above what the existing tax rate is, which is the 578170. The no new revenue tax rate is 54826. And in the packet, it said there's a proposed tax rate of 567. I'm for that. I know it's a balancing act because you want to get as much money as you can out of us. But with the county appraisal district, they're, they're, you know, every year, it's been increasing our property values, the assessed values, everything, you know, each one, each year, it's going up. And I'm retired. I don't want to be taxed out of my home. So if you could keep us senior citizens in mind and try to keep the tax rate as low as you can, that would be great. If it's impossible, maybe a suggestion would be you could increase the exemption amount for senior citizens. Like right now, I get a senior citizen discount and a homestead. So that's 20,000 off of, you know, my rate. So Denton County, I think, gosh, they're given 60,000, I think it is, or 50, maybe. And the school ISD, you get some off of that, you know, a greater amount. So maybe you could keep that in mind. But if you could lower the tax rate, that would be great. I have a minute left. Anyway, I guess, really, am I reading it right, though? Is the board wanting to, are you proposing the 567? Because that's in the packet. It, there was a, I don't have a copy in front of me, but there was a.
We'll answer your question.
Okay.
You have it. I think you have it mostly right.
Okay. Great. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, can I address our comments briefly?
Sure can.
So I only have one vote. But based on the discussions with the rest of the council, we've had a series of workshops. And I think it's very likely that we'll adopt the proposed rate, which, which I always get lost in these decimals, but it's the .56 and some other decibels. We had a finance audit committee meeting this afternoon. And historically, we collect practically 100% of our advolaram taxes, the property taxes you pay. This year, those collections are lagging. We're not sure why that is. But they're lagging to the tune of about $200,000. And so because of some investments we've made, including investments to purchase real property, which made the Realty Capital project possible, our fund balance is going to be dipped down next year. And to make sure that we're going to collect enough revenue that we don't have to dip further into that, we're going to publish a rate, or I'm going to propose that we publish a rate at .57817. Now, that is only a cap. So after we've published that rate, as it's been explained to us by our attorneys and staff, we can't impose a rate greater than that. So we want to have some cushion because our revenues are lagging. If we need to, when those numbers come in, we can increase the tax rate somewhat to make sure we don't have to dip further into our fund balance. But very likely, we'll adopt the proposed rate. But tonight, we want to make sure we give ourselves some cushion and publish at that a little bit higher rate. Does that answer your question?
In the packet of the meeting next month, is that when you would actually approve a final rate?
Yes, ma'am. And I, I get the dates mixed up, but they give us a handy calendar. But I believe at that meeting, we will actually approve a rate. And if, if things go as planned, it'll be the .567 rate that was the proposed rate.
If I understand correctly, the lag in the funds, do you think that's because they've been behind on the appraisal district and getting bills out to people and?
Not this year. We, that was, there was a problem last year with receiving data. And there were a lot of protests last year based on COVID and reactions to that. That is not what we think is the problem this year. And like I said, we have one of the best finance directors in the county, maybe in the state, and she's been doing this for a long time. And she doesn't know why. But, and we, we've just sent the collection material to our collection attorneys, and they're going to analyze it and provide her with a report. And that may give us further information about why we're lagging in our collections. Now, compared to other areas, our collections are not lagging. We just kind of have historically had incredibly high collection rates. And hopefully, we're not entering some kind of new reality. But we, we don't know, and we'll know more in four to six weeks.
Okay. Are you ready to make your motion, Mr.?
I am, unless Ms. Henderson wants to be the smart one to read the, okay, the law-year drafted motion. Mayor, I would move to approve a resolution placing a proposal on the September 16, 2021 council agenda to consider a fiscal year 2022 property tax rate of .57817 cents per $100 evaluation, which exceeds, which exceeds the no new revenue tax rate of .54826 cents and a de minimis tax rate of .57772 cents, but does not exceed the voter approval tax rate of .58503 cents, and to set the public hearing on the proposal to consider approving the tax rate for Thursday, September 16 at 7:00 PM at Corinth City Hall at 3300 Corinth Parkway, Corinth, Texas, 76208.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item six, consider an adoption of a resolution directing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation to provide funds for parks and recreation improvements, street improvements, municipal drainage improvements, and water and sewer improvements, and resolve, resolving other matters relating to the subject. Mr. Hart?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'd like to have our finance director, Leon Bentermeyer, to lay out this item for you.
I'm afraid to touch that, but hopefully you can hear me. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight before you is an item to approve a resolution that will publish an intent to sell certificates of obligation in the amount not to exceed $5 million for the commons at Agora Park. Now, if you will look at your backup, we also included as functions or a purpose of the bonds, drainage, street improvements, water, wastewater, and so forth. We do that. So in case we do not use all the funds for the park, it does give the council some flexibility to be able to use those funds for other projects. The total amount of bonds that we do need for the park is $4.5 million. We have put a not-to-exceed of $5 million because there will be some closing costs, some underwriter fees and so forth. So we do not know what those amounts will be at this time until we go to pricing. The last time we issued bonds, once we went to pricing, we were actually able to get much, I guess, one's a premium and one's a discount. We were able to get a discount on it. So it helped us. So I expect it will be somewhere close to 4.5 million. But until we do pricing in September, excuse me, October, we will not know for sure. According to the state statutes, we do have to publish this notice of intent in the newspaper two times. We have to do those both in August, in, towards the end of this month. In September and October, we will start having rating meetings with the rating agents. And then in October, they will come back with pricing. And we will be back before the city council on October 21 to actually sell the bonds. At that time, our finance advisors will be here to explain the pricing and explain, you know, the bond issuance. Once they're approved on October 21, we will receive the funds in November. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from council? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution directing. Directing publication of notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation to provide funds for parks and recreation improvements, street improvements, municipal drainage improvements, and water and sewer improvements, and resolving other matters relating to the subject.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Council comment and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member their opportunity to provide general updates and/or comments to fellow council members, the public and/or staff, on any issues or future events. Also, in accordance with Section 30.085 of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Burke?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
If I can jump in, I'm sorry. Tonight is Helen Eves, Helen Eves' last meeting. And tomorrow's her last day. And so I wanted to make that comment because of the excellent work she's done, so y'all can comment on her as well.
Okay, well, then I'll just say that I begged Helen Eves to stay. And she said it was a difficult choice, but not really. She rejected my, my begging. And I, I wish you the best, Helen Eves. I appreciate all the work you've done. I loved Fred when he was here. But I feel like you have really advanced the position and appreciate everything as far as updating the codes, driving us around the city, actually helping us visualize the problems, and just your tenacity in working through things. And I'm just personally a little sad that it feels like you got a lot of pushback from, from, from some of our citizens here at the end that was not deserved, in my opinion. And I certainly want you to know that I appreciate all your efforts. And I think you've done a great job for our town. Thank you.
Mr. Garber?
Yes. Helen Eves, thank you. Thank you for making the city what it is and the amount of time that you've been here. I'm sure where you're going. They don't even know yet how blessed they are to have somebody heading their direction is, that's as good as you and is talented. And I'm sorry that it's your last day. I kind of expected it was going to take longer. I can't believe it. But anyway, you went out on a super-high note. Realty Capital and getting that development started is quite a legacy to live, to leave here. And so just thank you so much. And a reminder to the rest of council, I have been planning a 20th anniversary trip for my wife. And it has been moved two or three times because of this new COVID thing. But it sounds like it's going to be 9/8 through 9/20. So I may end up missing a meeting, I think. But no more than that, and I'll be back. And Danielle will be smiling from ear to ear.
We have Zoom.
We do, we do have Zoom. And assuming it's not $20 a minute on wherever we're going to be in the middle of the ocean, I will be sure to log in.
Okay.
But you, you have my commitment.
Ms. Henderson?
Always hate being after the guys. But I just want to say thank you. You brought a breath of fresh air to this, to planning and development and a level of professionalism that we needed. And I enjoyed working with you. And I just wish you all the best. And I hope you don't become a stranger to us. And also, I feel like I need to cover my face before I ask this, but I got another email. Someone wanted me to ask if we'd put on the agenda about mask mandates. So I'm just the messenger.
I'd, I'd call the governor on that.
Okay.
And Mrs. Pickens?
Wait, I'm not finished. I also want to thank you, Elise, for coming to our chamber luncheon and being a big part of that. And we really appreciate you being there and representing our city. Thanks.
Mrs. Pickens?
Thanks, Helen Eves. You really helped me to understand kind of how planning and zoning goes in a city. And, I mean, you were the best director I've ever worked with. So, well, it's still true.
Don't minimize yourself, Helen Eves. The best.
Thank you so much for everything you've done to this, for the city, and, and to help me and probably all of us here on council. And, and you will be missed.
Mr. Hart?
Well, just kind of staying with that theme, I, I certainly appreciate all the work that Helen Eves did. She said she would stay till, you know, we got the zoning done with, with Realty Capital. And I, I just said we'd move it back several months. And she threatened some physical violence. So I left it on the schedule. So, but, but we appreciate it. And that's it.
Well, as I, as I understand it, it's not completed yet. So I guess you can't leave, right? I mean. Yeah, we don't have that clamor done yet. So I mean, but anyhow, Helen Eves, it's been great. Again, I kind of want to sympathize with all the other people here that your loss is going to be a great loss. You know, I always could tell you that when we came to a council meeting and we needed to make a decision on zoning or something in the public works, or planning and zoning, we always knew that it was going to be done well, it was going to be thorough, and that you had done all the research on it that would make it very easy for us to make good decisions. And I think a lot of the decisions this council has made was done because of your, your stewardship to your job and to the citizens of Corinth. And the citizens of Corinth are losing a real big asset to our community because of your leaving. But we do want to wish you the best. And like Tina says, don't make yourself lonesome. Come back and visit us. And we'll maybe even roll out the red carpet and give you a key to the city. But I don't know if it'll open anything. Okay? But with that, work earned.